Okay, well, good morning. I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors here in Coachella, and we are August 27, 2024, starting at 9:30 instead of 8 o'clock in the morning. So why don't we always want to do this first? Prior to roll call, I'd like to make clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that at least a portion of this board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, and that Director Nelson is in Shafter, California, and will be participating by speakerphone. In accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, the teleconference location has been identified on the agenda for this meeting. Clerk, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance after roll call. Clerk Bermudas, will you please call the roll?
Yes, good morning. President Powell?
Here.
Vice President Estrada?
Here.
Director Bianco?
Here.
Director Aguilar will be absent for this meeting, and Director Nelson?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, great. I'd now like to ask Director Nelson a couple of questions. Director Nelson, can you hear me well?
I can hear you well, President Powell.
Good. Were you able to hear us up to this point?
I sure was.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
Have you posted the agenda at your location?
I have.
Is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes, it is.
And is there anyone there from the public?
There is no public here this morning.
All right, let us know if someone shows up. And so all votes for this meeting must be taken by roll call, at least as long as Director Nelson's on the line. Okay, would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments for today's agenda?
No, sir.
We don't have anything removed, no emergency items, no changes.
Correct, sir.
Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment at this time?
Does not appear, sir.
Nope. All right, the consent calendar consists of items 5A through I. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can we have a motion in a second? Roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Past 4-0 with one absent. 7A, onto our Todd Groundwater. It looks like Zoe will be handling this. Good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. This item consists of authorizing Task Order Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement with Todd Groundwater in the amount of $400,640 to develop the Coachella Valley Regional Water Resilience Plan. I'd like to note that the full cost of this effort is covered by grant. The board may recall that on May 28 of this year, the board adopted Resolution 2024-13, accepting funds from the Governor's Office of Planning and Research for this effort. So with that, happy to answer any questions regarding this item.
My question wouldn't be a good one. I'll just keep it to myself. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve 7A?
I'll make a motion. Approve 7A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Yes, President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you, 4-0.
Past 4-0 with one absent. Thank you, Zoe. Next is 7B, the PSA with Krieger and Stewart for the design of nonpotable. Armundo?
Good morning, President Powell.
Good morning.
Members of the board, audience, fellow staff. My name for the record is Armando Rodriguez with the Engineering Department. And let me just state upfront, there's a typo in the BIA. The construction cost estimate stated as 13 million. It really is more, 18 million. We apologize for that typo, but it does look better in the design when you compare it to the design cost to the construction cost. Just want to be upfront.
Okay, thank you.
So we are seeking authorization to seek to execute a professional service agreement for our FY 24-25 nonpotable water project. This will be a process services agreement with Krieger and Stewart. Sinisa, the project engineer record is here, and thank you very much, Sinisa, for attending. But in addition to the $730,500 we're seeking, there is project management cost of $150,000, project contingency of $73,050 for a tour request of $953,550. So we continue, this project will continue to expand the nonpotable water service through Warp 7 and Warp 10. We will expand to five customers in addition to provide capacity enhancements to an existing nonpotable water line on Portola. There has been much work as of to date in regards to expanding Warp 10 nonpotable water service. As of today, we have completed the Hovly Lane East nonpotable water segment, which connects those customers from Bermuda Dunes Country Club to Palm Desert Country Club. We're continuing to expand the Frank Sinatra Warner Trail Warner Road. We're going to be complete here by the end of the year. And then we started here, construction here for the Marriott Shadow Ridge Emerald Desert Construction. We anticipate, we are starting now the construction with TE Roberts. So the purpose of this is to continue this good work to further the nonpotable expansion. And so this will provide us the offsite, onsite design, engineering design services for Desert Island Country Club, the Springs, and like I stated, expand the capacity for the low-pressure pipeline of Hovly. Within Warp, so that will be the work within Warp 10, Desert Island Springs Country Club, and expand the low-pressure pipeline on Hovly. And then within Warp 7, we're going to expand to the Shadow Hills High School, Talavera Community Association, and Shadow Hills Golf Course. That's the east and south courses here that you see on the map. We're about 3,400 linear feet of pipeline with this project. To connect these five customers, we're anticipating about 3,000 acre feet. And so there's a lot of good work that we can continue to do as we expand this nonpotable system within Warp 10 and 7. Let me just pause to see if there's any questions or continue with my presentations.
3,000 acre feet?
It's about 3,000 acre feet for the five customers.
Is that Shadow Hills, it says south, north, and east. Are those each nine whole courses?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Armundo, the purple and the yellow, those are all completed projects?
That's correct. So the project that we're focusing on is on the red, highlighted on red.
And the green.
The purple's not completed. That's, is it? No.
We, so the purple along Warner, it's complete?
Yeah.
The purple around Warner Trail is complete, except for a very small segment that we have to cross framework through a jack and bore. And then the work that we're doing along Frank Sinatra, the majority of that work is complete. The TE Roberts has a small segment right there by Portola and Frank Sinatra that we still have to do with the TE Roberts.
Okay.
But the majority, when you look at this purple, yeah, I'm happy to say with the support of Kerry Oliphant, there's been a lot of good work that has been done to connect all these customers.
Right.
So that, I would like to say that we're kind of in our last leg within Warp 10. I would like to take a break within Warp 10 and then focus ourselves and our attentions to Warp 7 and expand that facility. As you recall, we recently gave us authority to go out to bid for the Warp 7 tertiary. And so a lot of our efforts or a lot of our attention's going to be focused now or within Warp 7.
Yeah.
The work within Warp 10 is kind of our last leg. We want to operate the system, wait and see how it operates, look at all the diagonal demands, and hopefully we've done a good enough job that we can recycle most of the water.
Yeah, and so that warp, that line down Frank Sinatra, you're hitting, it looks like it hits Annenberg and it hits Tamarisk. Is Tamarisk hooked up?
It's not hooked up yet. This is all work that we're currently going to finish here by the end of the year.
Yeah, okay. So there's no plan to go to Morningside on this?
No, we're going to stop at Tamarisk. And I think Morningside has some golf courses within the channel, and that's the concern.
Oh, because you can't put the water in the channel?
Right.
And this is going to hook up the Disney project, too?
This will hook up Disney as well. And the Portola expansion will help support that. And we are in preliminary conversations with them in regards to where they want the connection so that they, and we have the capacity within Frank Sinatra, but we're still debatable within Portola. That's why we're asking for the design now to look at that.
I mean, these are expensive projects, but I really do think in the long run, we're going to be so happy that we're recycling all of our water.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And not only are they, yes, absolutely, they're expensive, but we really are trying to get support with the state so that we can continue seeking grants and loans. But then, so we anticipate having a SRF grant of $5 million and then going with a Wynn grant for hopefully another $5, $6 million to continue the successes we have seen, the partner, the great partnerships we have established with the agencies so that can continue. They see the value in regards to us expanding, so we've been successful in regards to getting those grants so that we don't have to do all the pay-go for this work.
Armundo, would you, where do we stack up in the rest of the state of California on our recycling program? I mean, are we ahead of most districts in California? Are we behind, or?
Good question. Some of the colleagues that I have conversation with when we attend these professional organizations, you know, we, I would like to say we're just a little behind, but we're doing a great job catching up. The fact that we're looking at Warp 10 and we're at the last leg of our customers, that's a great milestone. The fact that there's a great commitment in regards to Warp 7 and getting tertiary there, that's a great milestone. And so we're catching up and we're doing, I think, a great job in regards to implementing Kerry's leadership to expand nonpotable water.
Yeah, I think doing it differently, too, where, I guess I don't have data on this, but I suspect a lot of those other agencies are finding that effort has been a significant driver of rate increases, you know, in order to pay for all the, and, you know, so we're trying to do it where it's not having the same impact.
Right.
On, it is expensive.
Yes, it is expensive, but it's good to be at the tail end because then, you know, the partner, funding partnerships like Wynn and SRF see the value now, and so they're supporting us, and it's.
We also have a disadvantage because half of our population is not here for, you know, half of the year or at least four months. So it really changes things.
Somebody's flushing. There's somebody around.
Well, there's somebody around, but it's a lot less. There's a lot of empty homes here.
So after this whole sort of thing gets done, and you exhaust Warp 10, and you're focusing on Warp 7, and you're going to eventually exhaust that, and, you know, use it all, which is good, right? Is there any, what's the vision for Colorado River Water down into Indian Wells with several golf courses along that Highway 111 area, you know, Indian Wells Country Club, El Dorado, and whoever's along that line there? Is, I know we've talked about that in the past, but.
I think once we're done improving as much as we can on the recycled water, maximizing, our first goal was to maximize recycled water, get as many folks connected within Warp 10, 7, and we also have Warp 4. So, you know, the focus is going to be, once we're done with 7, focus on 4. I think once we're done with all three, I think we're going to come back and say, okay, how can we maximize?
Yeah, I mean, it's a kind of a different objective, right? I mean, you're really trying to deal with how you dispose of your wastewater, which is, those other courses won't be doing that. They'll be just Colorado.
Yeah, there's a great opportunity there to expand canal water after we expand Warp 10.
It's in the distant future, in other words, yeah.
Yeah, hey, John, I have a question. What is the percentage, it probably varies over the year, but on average, what's the percentage of wastewater that we treat and then reuse? So, you know, is it, is it 90%? Is it 80%? Is it 50%? And then what, once we get this Warp 7 up and running, how does that change that number? Because I get asked that a lot. Hey, how much, what percentage of your wastewater are you recycling and reusing?
Page 300.
It's a great question. I would hate to give you a wrong answer, but I know we have the data readily available. I can easily email you.
Jim's working on it right now.
Hey, that would be, regardless of how Jim does the back of the envelope, but.
It's in the general management report. He's just looking for the right page.
I think it's page 53. I'm trying to get to it.
That'd be impressive, you know, the page number.
It's roughly 50%, and that's primarily driven by the fact that we have about a little bit over 6,000 acre feet at Warp 4 that isn't currently being recycled. When you look at it plant by plant, and the plants that are actually half recycling, then you're probably at about 80% at Warp 10 and 90% at Warp 7. But getting recycling at Warp 4 will definitely increase that percentage to a much higher number.
Right, okay, thanks. Appreciate that.
Armundo, I think you're wrong on your number. I bet if you looked it up, I bet you were, were ahead of the curve.
I would like to think so as well.
Well, there's, I could be wrong, but I.
Yeah. How do you measure that? When they get, when you handed that little crystal trophy for recycling, then you'll know you're doing okay. We haven't seen one of those yet.
Yeah, I haven't seen one.
Put in an application for the trophy and see if you get one.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Well, I think once you get all this, I mean, like, like Zoe, we've never focused on Warp 4, and there's a huge opportunity there for agricultural irrigation. And I suspect that would be a fairly simple conversion. I don't know, maybe not. But that's, you know, that'll change the number dramatically.
Definitely.
But by plant by plant, yeah, I think we're doing good on Warp 10. Right, so we have this item in front of us for the PSA, and is there a motion to approve this?
I'll move that item.
I'll second.
And then, before you call the roll, just want to make sure I understand. So the only thing in this map that's not filled yet is, you said the red and the, and the green? But everything else is in, the purple, the black, the yellow? All that's in?
Just a quick review.
I mean, I guess it makes sense because the, the red is hooking up A, B, C, D, E, which is on that Warp 7, and then the little red there is hooking up those two other ones on, for Warp 10. But what about the red in the middle? Why is that needed?
So, the red in the middle, you mean the Portola segment?
Yeah. I don't know what you call it. I'm just wondering why that, it doesn't seem to be connecting anybody, so why is that being built?
So that's, that's our low-pressure pipeline. We need to expand the capacity so we're able to serve the customer base that we're anticipating. There's not enough capacity within the existing 18-inch line, and so we have to add another pipeline so we can continue to have additional capacity that we currently don't have to serve the customers on Portola.
So you're using that line to move water where?
So we're going to use that line to feed all the customers within Portola. So that would be Cutino, Annenberg, the Springs, Desert Island, and also to support Marriott Shadow Ridge as well. And so that pipeline is needed for, for capacity.
Okay, and right now you're moving the water through what, through the 24-inch?
There's an existing 18-inch line now along Portola.
Oh, so you're just going to upsize it?
Upsize it, yes.
Okay, so there's a bunch of other possible blue squares along that, that middle red line?
So there's a lot of existing customers now that are being fed by the 18-inch line. So they're not shown here in the map, but they're already existing customers.
Okay, and so why do you need to upsize it?
There's, there's not enough capacity for us because all the existing customers that are adjacent to Portola are taking the, all the waters that's within the 18. And so now we have to upgrade that 18 so that we can feed all the other customers, the 12 customers we were planned to connect.
I guess, I guess I'm, there's other future customers along Portola?
Well, we, we have Annenberg, Tamarisk, Mourning, Cutino.
They're downstream.
They're downstream of this pipeline. And to serve those customers, we need to upgrade Portola.
Which we've already got.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm not, I'm not understanding. I'm not as familiar with this area. So when you say, when you name these things, I don't, I don't quite place them in the map, so.
So the existing customers are using the, the capacity in the existing line, right? So you have to upsize that to add more customers?
To get where, though?
To get beyond the.
Yeah, to go down Frank Sinatra.
Which is those, those blue ones?
Yeah.
Or is there other blue ones? I guess.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, the ones on the left, yeah.
Yeah, so we, so we have to be able to upsize this pipeline so that we can connect these customers along Portola in addition to Marriott Shadow Ridge. So everything to the west and north.
I guess my question is, is there other blue ones that aren't connected? So.
So Cutino would be blue eventually.
Yeah, so Cutino would be blue, Marriott Shadow Ridge would be blue, Marriott Desert Springs would be blue. This customer here will be blue, and then Tamarisk will be blue. So we're just focusing on the customers we're connecting now, but there's a whole series of blue that we're connecting upstream of this pipeline.
But those blue right now, the Springs and Desert Island, that's not what's pushing that upsizing. It's some other blues that you don't have identified.
Yeah, it's all the combined customers in addition to these two customers that are pushing the capacity.
Is there a, is there a different exhibit with, with that bigger?
We definitely can provide you an exhibit that shows all the customers downstream of the Portola expansion. Yes, absolutely. We have it.
Yeah, send that, because that gives me a better sense of what, what's in and what's out.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we used to get that every quarter. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on this item. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Past 4-0 with one absent. Thanks, Armundo. Let's see.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah, 18 million? Next is 7C. The Dell, these Dell servers, Louise figured it would be you?
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. The request before you today is to replace servers that have reached end of life. We used to replace them about six years. Now we're trying to push for seven, but after seven, if we want to keep them running, their warranty is very expensive and it's not worth it. These are servers that are running 24/7, and they're running all the critical infrastructure for the district. Some are the SCADA servers here for Coachella, and the other ones are the enterprise servers in Palm Desert. These are the servers that run the virtual infrastructure. So obviously very critical for the district, and we're downsizing the footprint because a lot of stuff is going to the cloud. So as, as we move more systems to the cloud, you know, the servers will obviously be, the number of servers will be lower. But these are still running FileNet, Williams Limms, Cognos, the network drives, and so, you know, seven years old, we have to replace them. I don't know if you have any other questions?
Not really.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, and so let's go to the vote. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Past 4-0 with one absent. Written communications, we did have that.
The letter that came in over the weekend.
Right, we got that. Thank you.
Yep.
We have two information presentations for today. Carla with the investment performance report. We can do just a brief overview of it, I think, right?
Yes, we have both Jenny from Chandler and then Perry from PFM, and they'll both be doing a brief presentation. I've asked them to maybe do 10 minutes combined between the two.
Okay.
So we'll start off with Jenny first from Chandler.
Take nine on the first one.
Okay, thank you, Carla. Good morning, honorable directors, staff, members of the public. Thank you for inviting Chandler to present the district's fiscal year and investment report. So I'm just going to touch on a few highlights about the economy briefly. If there's anything you'd like me to go into more detail about, feel free to stop me if you have any questions. I'm Jenny Linkevitz. I'm a senior portfolio manager at Chandler. So we'll start off just talking about some major themes in the economy. If we could go to the next slide, please. So right now, we're seeing really tight monetary policy from the Federal Reserve, and that's brought the US economy to an inflection point, and they're expected to start cutting rates responding to a slowing economy next month. So we're seeing a gradual weakening of the US consumer, particularly lower-income consumers with savings accounts dwindling and credit card balances starting to rise. We're also seeing moderating inflation as that starts to come down, and increased volatility. We had a real drop in interest rates that happened earlier in the month on a weak labor report. We also saw the volatility surrounding the unwind of the yen carry trade where investors were borrowing in low-interest yen and investing in the US stock market. And we've also seen the non-farm payroll adjustment of 818,000 jobs were subtracted from the past year's non-farm payroll number, bringing the monthly average to about 174,000 jobs in March. So if we could go to the next slide, please. We'll look at the employment picture. So we did have, as I mentioned, a weaker labor report for the month of July that came out, only 114,000 jobs added to the US economy, and we saw the unemployment rate tick up to 4.3%. So that's still relatively low, but it's moving, you can see the trend is clearly, for the jobs picture is trending towards a weaker side. For the local area in Coachella, the unemployment rate was 9.8% for June, so higher in your local area. The average hourly earnings in this report dropped to 3.6%, so that's a major contributor to inflation. So if we could skip ahead two slides, please, the inflation slide. We'll take a look at CPI for July moderated to about 2.9% year-over-year. It's similar to the Riverside area, which is with about 2.8% for July. We're still seeing shelter prices contribute to CPI, but we have seen gas prices come down over the past year. And then I'm going to skip ahead to slide 13, if I could, to the bond yield slide in the interest of time, so right there would be perfect. Thank you. So bond yields have really plunged in July and August. We've got rates on between two- and 10-year treasuries have fallen below 4%. And on the right, we've got that yield curve inversion that still persists, where we have short-term rates higher than longer-term rates. It's been going on for over two years, which is a record amount of time, and it usually is an indicator that a recession is, is likely to happen. We do have, you know, the Fed is expected to meet and cut rates in September, and then the market currently has the equivalent of four-quarter point rate cuts priced into the market right now for 2024. So once the Fed starts cutting rates and brings down those short-term rates, we're looking for the yield curve to start to normalize with long-term yields higher than short-term yields. And it does, it does propose the possibility of a soft landing, but we're pretty. And it does it does propose the possibility of a soft landing, but we're pretty late in the economic cycle at this stage. So are there any questions about the economy before we move on to the portfolio?
Did you say four quarter point rate cuts in twenty twenty four?
That's what's priced into the market. That's not what we're expecting. We're expecting two to three rate cuts.
Okay.
Okay, and then if we could move on to the portfolio section, we'll go over the the details. So Chandler manages the operating funds for the district. It's a very conservative mandate governed by state law and also your investment policy. So we're managing to the Bank of America one to three year government corporate index. And then we had, there was a compliance report that in the first couple pages that shows that the portfolio was in compliance with both code and the district's investment policy as of the end of June. So we monitor that using Bloomberg AIM. And then this slide shows the characteristics of the portfolio. So in the center column, that's the June thirty data. On the right, we've got the previous quarter. On the left, you've got the benchmark comparison. So I think the most noteworthy thing here is that we've moved our duration a little bit longer than the benchmark. So as of June, our target was a hundred and two percent. So that's right where we were. Today, we're more targeting a hundred four, a hundred five percent, and that's just in anticipation of rates starting to drop. The purchase yield has been moving higher. And we still have a few pandemic era securities in the portfolio, but those are maturing off in the near future. So the market rate on the portfolio as of the end of June was around five percent. Quality very high, double A plus, which is the equivalent of the government ratings. And then the total market value, we saw that increase about fifteen million dollars over the course of the quarter. A big part of that is interest payments have been increasing as we've been investing in higher yielding securities. In addition to that, there was a ten million dollar contribution to the portfolio that also increased the value. Next slide, please. Okay, looking at the sector distribution, just a broad brush here. We have about sixty four percent of the portfolio is invested in government securities, treasuries and agencies. About twenty five percent in high quality corporate bonds, about nine and a half percent in asset backed securities, and about two percent in super nationals. And the next slide, please. Well, this one shows you the duration profile of the portfolio, and it also shows the different sectors and how they're diversified across that spectrum. And so it's a one to three strategy, so the vast majority of the assets are invested one to three duration. But we do have some a little more of a diversified profile versus the benchmark. So we have about thirty percent of the portfolio has a duration of one year or less. And that's helpful in case the district were to need liquidity. We wouldn't be forced to necessarily sell at an opportune time if we can use those maturities if they were needed. And we also have invested some longer term as well to balance it out. Some of the longer term cash flows that won't be needed for a long period of time. We have about twelve percent invested three to five years. And about two percent of the portfolio is invested out five to seven years. So we did those investments in late twenty twenty three when yields were higher. So those are are looking very, very good right now. And then I'm just going to skip to slide twenty six, please, to the performance slide. Right there would be perfect. Thank you. And so the district's performance is in green and the benchmark is in gray. And we're using the government corporate index when we're being is what we're being compared to. And we have, as you can see, we've been managing the portfolio just under five years. So we've been outperforming the benchmark for for all the longer term periods of time. So this encompasses, of course, the pandemic when yields were quite a bit lower. But it includes your income. It also includes realized and unrealized gains and losses. But since inception, the annualized return has been one point three three percent. So we've been beating the benchmark by twenty two basis points over the last three years. We've been beating the benchmark by thirty basis points. And you can really see the yield has moved up quite a bit in the last twelve months. So four point nine percent is the return versus the benchmark of four point seven five percent. So we're really starting to see the benefit of higher rates in the portfolio, and we've been able to lock in higher yields for a longer term. So if we could go to pages forty five and forty six, there's a list of the transactions in the port. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Let me go back. I I let me go over the liquidity, the reporting account real quick. Slide twenty seven. Yeah, right there is perfect. Thank you. So we have, this is a reporting account that we that is managed by district staff. And so you can see this is invested primarily in an L GIP called Camp. So the yields on short term securities, as I mentioned, are quite a bit higher. And so it's yielding about five point four percent. And we did see that increase in value by about thirty seven million dollars to about a hundred eighteen million as the district got some funds in over the course of the quarter. And then skipping ahead to slide thirty, we've got the consolidated portfolio right there is you can see that this is up about fifty one million altogether. This combines a Chandler managed portfolio and also the the funds that are managed by staff. So it's up to six hundred sixteen million dollars. The purchase yield is moving higher over time. The average duration is about one and a half for the entire strategy. And then the next slide, slide thirty is going to show the composition of the portfolio. So it's about half treasuries and agencies, about twenty percent invested in the L GIP in liquid investments, twenty percent in corporate bonds, about seven and a half in asset backed securities, and about twenty percent in super nationals. And now, if we could go, please, to slides forty five and forty six. We have the holdings here, and this gives you good information about ratings and maturity on individual bonds that we've purchased for the strategy. And then we got transactions. So this slide, there's a there's a column that says acquisition yield in the center. And so you can see the purchases that we've done over the course of of that quarter were high fours and over five percent in some cases. So we were able to get some good opportunities for investment. We believe a lot of the new issue that happened this year is is front loaded. We've had a record amount of issuance of corporate bonds and asset backed securities and things because we believe it's going to quiet down later in the year when we get closer to the election. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take your questions.
You know, I forget what whether it was in there or not, but on a on a twelve month, on the trailing twelve months, what's our dollar amount gain or net on this portfolio? Do we have that?
Yeah, let me just see what we have here.
I I saw percentages, but I don't remember if I saw dollars. I might have. I don't remember.
Yeah, so if you look at the we have, let's see if this report shows. It doesn't this this particular report doesn't show the actual dollar amounts. But let me just go to the holdings report and see if I can find the the actual total market value here. Yeah, so I could what I could do is calculate the are you looking for the income?
Yeah.
The income and the and the return?
Yes.
For that for twelve months? Yeah, I can I can calculate that and send that over to Carla to share with you.
All right, thank you.
I have a question on a lot of these longer term, you know, three to five year bonds that are five percent or better. Are are what's the percentage of these that are callable versus non callable? How does that work in our portfolio?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the majority of the securities that we're buying are are non callable. There are some corporate bonds that have all features like one month or three months before maturity. In some cases, as much as a year, but primarily for a total return strategy, we're focusing on non callable structures.
Yeah, fair enough. Good. That's a that's a great answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
President Powell, what I can provide is maybe the quarter earnings. So just for this quarter compared to March thirty first to twenty four to June thirtieth. It was for the portfolio increased by fourteen point six million. We had the ten million dollar contributions, so that leaves us with about four point six million. Four point seven in earnings, yes. We did also do an additional twenty three million dollar contribution in June, sorry, January of twenty twenty four. A lot of those contributions have to do with the drawdowns of our twenty twenty two domestic notes rather than leaving them in the liquid investments. We have bought treasuries and others that are yielding and that are non callable in anticipation of rates decreasing rather than leaving them in that liquid investment camp or life that we don't need that much capacity. We have a hundred and eighteen million, plenty of liquid capacity within our current.
So so on this portfolio, the earnings on a yearly, it's going to be somewhere in the order of fifteen million dollars.
That would be correct.
Something like that.
But we can give you the exact number.
Because I think rates are a little peaky right now, you know, so they're gonna they were lower and they're going to be lower. Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, that's great. I think we're ready for the next.
So Perry, can you hear us? We're ready for you.
Yes, I can.
If we could change to the other presentation, please. There you go.
Okay, great. Hello, everyone. My name is Perry Giovanelli. I'm the senior managing consultant with PFM Asset Management, going over your your longer assets here in your OPEB. So if we could flip to the next page. Just touching on overall equity, you can see domestic equities for the quarter from a large cap standpoint did well. If you drop down there, you see that the small cap and mid cap numbers were negative for the quarter. But overall, domestic equity is is doing fairly well. If you look at, you know, the last the last quarter and the last six months from a year to date and one year number, all all those numbers are in good shape from that standpoint. If you drop the international, still seeing positive numbers, just not doing quite as well as domestic equity. But overall, the the, you know, the the performance or the performance for the quarter and the returns coming back for the quarter and the one in the one year have been pretty good in both domestic and international equity. Fixed income is a bit of a different story. The Barclays Ag was negative in the first quarter of of twenty twenty four. And you can see for the for the second quarter, just, you know, seven basis points to the positive. So overall, negative seventy one basis points year to date. So fixed income has definitely been struggling more, you know, somewhat waiting on on what the Fed will do next. And as the previous comments were, everything the Fed Fed has indicated, you know, after Friday's meeting is that they'll be making a rate cut of twenty five basis points in in September. So right now, it looks as if the Fed is walking that tight rope that they've been trying to walk as far as you know, getting us to that soft landing as they talk about basically keeping it a mile with recession, those types of things. We have not hit numbers yet from an economic standpoint that indicate recession. We have definitely seen slowing, but have not hit that. If you flip to the next page. And just to give you a real brief here on on GDP. If we go back to the third quarter of twenty twenty three, GDP came in over four percent. And then in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty three, it came in just over three percent. So it is gradually going down and and actually in the first quarter of of twenty twenty four, it was down to one point four percent. But still positive numbers. And overall, you know, we've seen unemployment tick up a little bit, but not to a level that's concerning. From a historical standpoint, it's still historically low. The government tends to look at unemployment at five percent raise being full employee, fully employed. The last five percent they tend to look at is either skill sets don't match the jobs that are out there or people are not actually looking. So, you know, the unemployment rate that we've had, you know, that's been around in that three point seven range for for quite some time until it ticked up recently to four point three. You know, has is is really in a good position. If we flip to the next page. This chart in the top right corner does measure manufacturing and service production in the country. And this is where we have seen slowing. So the blue line is manufacturing, the yellow line is service. And if you the fifty going across the middle, basically if we're below fifty, that's contraction. And if we're above fifty, it's indicating growth. So you can see manufacturing did more or less what we, you know, what we see historically whenever there are slowdowns going through the economy, it dipped below fifty and it's been down below fifty for, you know, last year or so. And then, you know, it's starting to creep back up and it's, you know, basically right now flirting with with the fifty line is the way I would put it. It was up last quarter, now slightly down below this quarter. Service has actually dipped below fifty for the first time in a while. I mean, they bounced around, but you can see it's also it's off of it's high. I mean, it was up to almost sixty seven at one point from a production standpoint. So, you know, we've seen the slowing, but really what the household is feeling more than anything else is the economy has has not hit a bad, like that slowdown, that that recessionary type of numbers at all. It's really been the inflation that we experienced two years ago when the Fed started. And why the Fed actually increased the rate as quickly as they did was to combat that inflation. That's what most households are feeling today is how the prices have gone up. And the way I try to simplify it for everyone is, you know, we averaged two percent inflation for over twenty years. And then in one year, it jumped up over nine percent. So it's almost like going five years ahead, you know, from a pricing standpoint, without those five years of cost of living raises for for, you know, a good way to put it. So it's like right now, we're sitting in twenty twenty four, we're paying twenty twenty five or twenty twenty eight pricing, you know, right now. And that's what that's really what everybody's feeling from a from an economic standpoint, that the tightness there. We could drop down about three or four more pages. Another one. So right here, this kind of gives you an idea over the next six to twelve months, areas that were, you know, where we're at, whether it's a concern level. For instance, monetary policy, we're neutral on it, like as we said, as I said earlier. It looks like the Fed is is doing something that has been hard for them to do before, which is, you know, walk the tight rope and try to try to prevent a major recession and try to walk us through to what hopefully will be as they keep phrasing that mild recession, soft landing. With that, over, you know, so from that standpoint, monetary policy, inflation, we're, you know, we're we're feeling better about because we're seeing data points now from the past couple collections of data points that inflation is, you know, heading downward. That's really what the Fed wants to see. They want to see that trend going toward two. That's their goal to get back there. Overall, though, the bottom right corner is where our real concern is geopolitical risk globally. You know, if we can make that red more red, that's really where the issues are right now that make us, you know, the most concerned about markets and reactions. Flip into the next page. What's this means? We we take most of the information and we're trying to give you a feel over the next quarter where we're where we're positioning the portfolio. And it's somewhat in that neutral frame all the way across. And what that means is we're staying really close to the targets of your investment policy. Right now, we don't see a value to overweighting equities to try to take advantage of anything in the market. And and at the same time, we don't feel it's a time in the market to, you know, get defensive and underweight. So we're staying pretty much on target, waiting for fixed income to start calming down whenever they can get a feel for the direction the Fed's going to take us as far as rate reductions. With that, I can take you into the portfolio, two more pages down. There you go, right here. And overall, performance is is in a good position. The quarter, we were slightly behind the benchmark at one point four one versus the benchmark at one point four nine. But for your your fiscal year from July twenty twenty three to June twenty twenty four, you had an overall return of twelve point eight five percent versus twelve point three. So good outperformance, good solid numbers. Nice to see double digit numbers anytime you can get your your performance like that. Overall, your two and three year number slightly behind, and that's based off of really twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. As we adjusted the portfolio, we got caught a little bit as twenty twenty two was going down. We didn't adjust fast enough to get defensive. And then we got more defensively positioned. So as twenty twenty three took off, we were still, you know, in a more defensive mode. So it caused a little underperformance in twenty two and twenty three. So that's affecting that that three year number a little bit. But overall, the most important numbers there are the long numbers. You can see your five year number is at seven point three four percent versus the benchmark at six point seven six. And since inception, dating back to two thousand sixteen, return of seven point four eight percent versus the benchmark at seven point one. So sitting in really good solid shape. Drop down a few pages. I'm sorry, that's a little too far. Come back up a couple. Right here, well, yeah, right here on this page, I was talking about the targets of the allocation. So you can see your target allocation is the light blue bar. And the dark blue bar is where we actually have the allocated. So the domestic equities is the top, and you can see we're pretty much right on top of target. Same with international and the same with fixed income. So that kind of gives you a feel of that chart right where I showed you, we're somewhat neutral across the board and we're staying very close to targets. So if you can go up one page. Give you a feel for over that one year timeframe, your fiscal year timeframe, what did that double digit return mean to your portfolio? The third column over, it's the bottom box. Your return on investment was over four million dollars in cash. So the percentage, what did that equate to in in hard dollars? So four million one hundred fifty eight thousand was your gain for over the last twelve months. Year to date, first six months of the calendar year, your return on investment was two million one hundred seventy seven thousand. And then the the current quarter, we're in the second quarter, that that one and a half percent return roughly resulted in five hundred and five thousand in hard dollar return. in hard dollar return. So that's what I have for you today. If you have any questions.
Thank you. I don't. Questions? Fair enough.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, next we have our update on the strategic plan. Robert, I think we, we, I got the gist of it from the presentation, so.
No, perfect. You, uh, read my mind, President Powell. Uh, so if there's any questions, uh, please feel free to ask. Otherwise I will skip it for the interest of time.
Thank you.
Yeah, good. Okay.
Lots of green, lots of green. Yeah, that's good.
And as the board recalls, we do not have a strategic plan underway at this point. We suspended.
We're on hiatus.
Exactly.
Then, uh, onto, uh, board general comments. Why don't we start with Director Nelson?
Yeah, sure. Um, I just wanted to make the comment this morning, uh, one comment about, um, the, um, progress with, uh, the Bureau Reclamation. With IID, uh, implementing its, uh, conservation program, uh, it, it's going to release another hundred and eighty million dollars towards, uh, Salt and Sea, uh, mitigation, which is, um, you know, in addition to the seventy million dollars that they, uh, put forth, uh, uh, earlier, uh, to equal two hundred and fifty million dollars. And the primary component of that money goes to the, uh, California Natural Resources Agency to, um, invest in the, um, species conservation habitat program there, um, um, around the sea. Um, but there is, uh, kind of three pots of money there. There's some tribal money to support, uh, staff people, uh, with the Torres Martinez. There's, uh, two million dollars a- and, uh, kind of for two positions, um, uh, staff positions at IID. And there's, there's also a million dollars designated to Coachella Valley Water District, um, for, um, addressing Salt and Sea issues. And so that, um, Costello, I know, I know with the, um, Salt and Sea Authority, uh, I, I believe you guys may have been talking about that. And if not, you know, we should and, and, uh, see how best to utilize those funds, um, uh, from a local perspective to have local input, um, and so forth. So the, you know, the primary bucket goes to CNRA, but there is monies available there and, you know, we should have those just, you know, just to say we should have those discussions going forward at how best we can utilize the funds, uh, appropriated for, uh, Coachella and Imperial.
Well, I'll respond. Uh, yeah, you, you might have remembered that I brought that up, I think, um, during Jim's, uh, goals. Um, I'm not sure if they, if that, that landed as one of his goals, but it was a conversation that we had. Uh, he was able to pull the agreement, uh, where he was able to confirm that we in fact do have that million dollars. Um, and it is something that we are trying to have a conversation, at least from the Salt and Sea Authority's perspective, as to where to best fill in the gap with, with those monies that are available to both IID and CVWD. Um, we do have some, uh, some budget, uh, concerns, uh, certain monies that we were expecting from the state, uh, to come to the authority that, um, we might no longer have. So those are things that are, that we're talking about. And, uh, as you know, uh, Director Dogstatter is now the Chair of the Salt and Sea Authority. I'm still the, uh, Vice Chair and uh, we met, uh, about a week ago to talk about some strategic planning. And I think one of the things that we've identified also was, uh, both of us coming to each of our boards to kind of flag that one million dollars and say, hey, you know, how can we best utilize this money? So I appreciate you bringing it up. Um, it is something that we've known, we, we've kind of had in books and we haven't really talked too much about, uh, potential options on how to use it. So thank you for, uh, bringing it up. I'll, I'll make sure that I, uh, uh, talk to Director Dogstatter to say, hey, you know, what, what do we think is the best way to use this? So thank you for that.
Yeah, awesome. Thanks. That's it for me, John.
Thank you. Uh, Director Bianco.
So I don't know if this is a fair comparison, but I did Google how much water, how much is recycled in California? And it says eleven percent. So I'm not sure if this is what year this is, but if we're at fifty percent, we're, we're doing well. So I just want to get that. I want to see if you're, if you're correct in saying that we're behind. We, it looks like we may be ahead.
All right. Yeah, probably a little different if you're at a recycled water conference, that the people there are going to be self-selecting as folks that are already on board for that. So you're comparing to those folks, which are all the ones that are doing what we're doing. Thank you. So, uh, Vice President Estrada.
No comments.
I will also no comment today. Let's see here. I guess this, do we have any requests for future agenda items from the board? Hearing none. There were three uh, meetings listed on the agenda. They're all Director Nelson. Why don't you go ahead and take those?
Okay, thank, thanks, John. And I have a couple more to report. Let's see, let me get to the list here. So on August fourteenth, we, uh, had a Colorado River Board meeting uh, in Poway, California. Uh, I attended, um, at that meeting, uh, John, um, John, um, Chris Harris, uh, you know, officially, um, and, uh, retired. And there were a number of presentations made, uh, to Chris in appreciation of his work. Um, we had a resolution as well as a tier drop, uh, memorial trophy type, um, item. And, uh, there were others as well. And, uh, it was a good meeting. Um, it was a good meeting. Um, appreciated that. We also took a tour of the San Vicente dam facilities. That's a water storage, uh, facility, uh, operated by the City of San Diego. Uh, and then, uh, San Diego County Water Authority increased the dam size and put, um, uh, more capacity into the reservoir. So, um, that is really operated like San Luis Reservoir, where you have the CBP and the State Water Project, uh, in San Vicente. You have City of, uh, San Diego and the, and the Water Authority. Uh, so good tour and lots of discussion about their reliable system there. Uh, so then on to August twenty-sixth, uh, there was a snapu on, uh, getting into the meeting. So I wasn't able to attend. Um, but, uh, I did attend yesterday, August twenty-sixth, the meeting with, uh, Dan um, and, uh, Jim with the staff, uh, to discuss, um, irrigation lateral supply challenges, um, as cropping patterns change. Um, uh, you know, certain laterals have different challenges. So there was a good discussion about, you know, how to meet some of that, uh, demand and, and shortfall. So that was a meeting yesterday. And on, uh, August fifteenth, uh, the U.S. Bureau Reclamation held a WebEx webinar with the August twenty-four month study. As you know, the August twenty-fourth study uh, really dictates what the twenty twenty-five annual operating plan is. And so we will again be in a tier one shortage, uh, which means for California, there are no contributions to the drought contingency plan, uh, or to the oh-seven guidelines. Uh, so for California, it's, um, somewhat business as usual, uh, but along, we, we will have our conservation programs for uh, critical lake levels. Um, and then on August sixteenth, um, there was a sites reservoir committee, uh, uh, meeting, um, a lot of discussion about the, uh, upcoming administrative hearing, um, uh, hearings. Um, and so the committee talked about, uh, progress made and, and, um, the challenges, uh, with moving the reservoir forward, uh, which is on track, um, uh, and looking good. And then on August, uh, nineteenth, uh, I had two meetings. There was a section five contractors meeting, uh, which, um, you know, included the section five contractors on the river. Um, we heard from, um, negotiating parties that, uh, were still having very critical challenges, uh, with, um, coming up with a cohesive plan from between the Upper Basin and the Lower Basin, um, about what to do after our, um, a one point five million acre foot conservation program in the Lower Basin between Nevada, Arizona, and California. Uh, so that's, um, a little bit frustrating. But then on that same day, um, the State Water Resources Control Board held a sites, uh, administrative hearing, um, for water right application, um, off the Sacramento River. Robert did a great job at, um, at uh, presenting the policy statement from Coachella Valley Water District in support for sites. And there were a number of, uh, other supporters, uh, in there. Uh, so the administrative hearing, uh, officer will hear, has heard those and will, uh, be taking testimony and expert witnesses moving forward to, um, rule on the water rights application in about a year. So that, that concludes all the meetings that I attended.
Thank you. Uh, any other meetings we need to add?
Yes, I have two meetings. Um, I also had a, a conversation with our general manager and, and Dan on the canal issue on Friday, uh, the twenty-third. Um, thank you for that. That was, gave me a very good understanding of what the issue is. And I think, um, you have, at least from what I got, you have what you need to try to mitigate those issues. So, um, thank you for the explanation. It does seem to be a big problem. So I don't know if, uh, we're going to get a briefing, uh, as a board, but, uh, seems like the, the man in that, on that lateral, um, is two times, three times, um, what it's been, uh, on average. So it's a, it's a big issue. And then on, um, the, the fifteen, I talked a little bit about it. I had a strategic, uh, planning meeting with, uh, the Salt and Sea Authority, the Director Dogstatter and myself were present to talk about, um, some of the big items that we're tracking at the Salt and Sea Authority. One of the big ones is that, that study that we're working on with the, um, Army Corps of Engineers. It's a a big project that has some commitments from both the federal government and the state, um, to finish that study. It sounds like it's a multi-year study, not, uh, it started as a three-year study, but I think it's being pushed off now more of a eight-year study. But it seems to open, um, our ability to tap into some, uh, big pots of money, uh, within the, um, Army Corps of Engineers. So something that we're tracking. And then, uh, we are also trying to schedule uh, several tours, uh, this, this year. Um, we have a big want to um, visit the Owens Lake and to get an understanding of how, uh, the state and others are managing the air quality concerns in that region. It seems like, um, there is a some sort of collaboration between, um, um, LA Department of Water and Power, um, the, uh, Air Quality, uh, Regional Board there in that area, uh, the State of California. They, they have dozens of, of air monitors that trigger certain, um, uh, responses and fines and they, they just really have that whole place, uh, on watch. They, I think they, I believe they have satellite imagery that they use to make sure that, that areas of the lake are covered, uh, with some type of mitigation. And if it's not, then, uh, there's fines that come with that. So, um, that's something that we're going to keep tracking and, um, so something needs something that we haven't done, at least since I've been there. So looking forward to that. And that's it. Thank you.
Any, any others? Um, is there a motion approved per DM for the meetings reported on? Or second? Okay, motion by Nelson, second by Bianco. A roll call, please.
President Powell?
Uh, aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
General Manager report.
Yes, sir. Nothing this morning. Uh, we were going to have a presentation on the irrigation challenges, but because we started late, I'm going to defer that to, uh, perhaps our next meeting. Uh, I do have a report from, uh, Scott Barrett on a piece of legislation moving forward, but we'll do that under departmental reports. I have nothing else, sir.
Oh, so we have a departmental report. We have counsel first. Yes.
Yes, just real briefly to follow up on the sites, sites project authority, uh, aside from the water rights hearing that Director Nelson mentioned, uh, as I mentioned before, um, the EIR for the site project was certified, went through the trial court and was upheld. And under the Permit Streamlining, uh, Act, this is a project and sequel project that is being, uh, streamlined through a much, uh, shorter, uh, period of time if somebody wishes to A, challenge it or B, to appeal it. So as a result, uh, the challengers who had lost at the trial court level did file an appeal. And, uh, the appeal has been ordered to a hearing on September seventeenth in the Yolo County Superior Court. Uh, so we'll let you know what happens from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Right. Do we have any departmental reports?
Yes, sir, just one.
Scott Barrett.
Just me.
Aye, Scott.
Just you.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, Scott Barrett, Department of Public Affairs and Customer Experience. And I wanted to give you an update on two pieces of legislation. And you know, at this time of year, things happen quickly. AB thirty-one ninety-eight, the JPA bill passed both houses of the legislature and is currently on the governor's desk. We're sending a letter of support on that bill today or tomorrow. Um, and then the other one is Senate Bill five eight three. That is the Salt and Sea Conservancy bill, uh, from Senator Padilla. We've been requested to provide a letter of support. And we have the letter drafted, but, uh, Vice President Estrada and I were talking and, um, we're trying to figure out the Salt and Sea Authority's position on the bill, find out if they had any additional concerns. But, you know, our board at one time had an opposed position. We moved to supportive amended. Uh, the bill was amended. There have been a number of amendments that I think we were okay with. We were okay with. Um, it was amended last week. Um, you know, nothing substantial. It authorizes the conservancy to acquire, hold and manage land and property rights, including easements and water rights within the Salt and Sea region. Um, it only becomes operative if the climate bond passes, the ten billion dollar climate bond passes in November. So, um, you know, that's one of the ways that it's going to be funded, um, in the legislation. So anyway, I, you know, we were planning on doing a letter of support unless there's any opposition from or unless I'm directed to come back to the board for.
Well, I think it's important to find out what the Salt and Sea Authority is doing.
So, um, the direction from the Salt and Sea Authority is to provide a letter of support. Um, the amendments that we were fighting for and made it to the bill are that the local jurisdictions to make the Salt and Sea Authority have a seat on the conservancy. So all of the, uh, all of the members of the Salt and Sea Authority, um, do have a seat in the conservancy, which was something that we had asked for when we met with the senator. And so, um, we, we, what we had big concerns about was, uh, there being duplication of efforts, um, there not being participation from the kind of Salt and Sea Authority and embedding the Salt and Sea Authority kind of into the conservancy, I think is going to allow us to express our concerns and kind of move to conservancy and to what it needs to be. So we, I think the Salt and Sea Authority is going to be in support, submitting the letter. So I, I would, I would recommend that we send the support letter.
Okay. It will go this morning.
Yeah, great. I think that's really good.
Thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Scott. Is that it for department reports?
Yes, sir.
Looks like it. Okay. Looks like it, okay. At this time, the board recessed and closed session to consider the items listed on the agenda. And following closed session, we will reconvene to report a. Buddy? Are we good to go?
Are we good? Yes.
Yeah, okay, so we're back, the regular meeting is hereby reconvened. We do not have any reportable action from closed session and with no further business, this meeting is adjourned.